Hello, everyone. My name is Judy McSwine. I'm with the League of Women Voters. And I am the moderator tonight. Pat Budlong, also from the League of Women Voters, sitting up here, is our timekeeper. I also wanted to tell you that I have put some voter registration forms on the table in the ante room if you'd like to take one. But I caution you, you please need to turn it in as soon as possible. Now, I'm going to give you the rules for the forum tonight. The opening statement, each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Then, answers to questions will be for one minute, and the closing remarks for one minute. If I don't answer all the questions is because there are lots of duplicates. And they have drawn straws for the order. The first opening statement, we will, I will stagger, so you won't always go first, Mr. Musio. And next, you know, then you'll have the next, the first question, you will answer first, and so on. So I'll keep staggering. You understand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, we'll start right now. And, Mr. Musio, will you please start with your opening statement of two minutes?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Musio. I've been a resident of Tarpin Springs for 27 years. I've seen a lot of changes in Tarpin Springs. I've been active in the community. I've done quite a few things. I've started out as a coach in Little League. I volunteered at Helen Ellis. I was a director at the Chamber of Commerce. I was nominated president for the healthcare ministries here in Tarpin Springs. So I've been very active, and I continue to volunteer at Helen Ellis when asked to. I am married. Married for 36 years. I have four children. I have five grandchildren. Two are in the audience tonight. Very happy to see them. My goal as city commissioner, I have four objectives. And one of my main objectives is to maintain a good quality of life here in the city of Tarpin Springs, which also includes not hindering or affecting our natural resources. I also feel it's very important that we plan for the future. We all plan for the future. We have retirements, we have 401Ks, we have ERAs. We all plan for the future, and we have to do the same thing here in the city. Another goal would be to work with the business community. It's very important to work with the business community. Their success is the city's success. Their growth is the city's success. And finally, as your city commissioner, I feel it very important that we listen to all the pros and cons throughout the city, and everyone has to be heard, and I would represent all of Tarpin Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Seber.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to start with thanking the League of Women Voters and the city for organizing and hosting this event, and all of you for coming here tonight. I'm Raya Seber. I was born in the U.S., but left at a few months old, and was raised overseas and educated overseas. I moved to Florida when I was 20 and earned my bachelor's and master's degrees at USF. I started my career at Hillsborough Community College counseling students and also working part-time as an adjunct instructor teaching French and career decision-making, which was a course I helped develop. I moved to Tarpin Springs when my daughter was accepted into the Vet Academy at Tarpin Springs High School, and I was offered a job as a guidance counselor at Tarpin High. After moving here, I fell in love with our beautiful, peaceful, small community, its history and culture, and all there is to do here. Being of Greek heritage, I felt like I had come home to my roots. I retired from education in 2009, and since then have opened three storefronts on the Sponge Docks. I also became merchants association president my first year in business. I belong to the chamber. I'm a chamber partner. I serve on the economic, I mean, I'm sorry, I serve on the city's budget advisory committee and am active in the tourist development council. And as someone who loves the water, I take time to paddle, and I'm a competitive canoe paddler with Clearwater Canoe Club. I'm the proud mother of my daughter, Michelle, who is a college student. I have been a lifelong volunteer and have worked to bring diverse interests and groups together, and would like to do the same as your city commissioner. I feel that my knowledge, experience, and drive are some of the valuable tools I have to make me a good city commissioner. I would like to take the opportunity to work with you as your city commissioner, because when we work together to build our future, we can make Tarpin Springs stronger. If you'd like to know more about me, please visit my website, electrayaseber.com. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Robowski.
Yes, thank you. I'd still like to thank the League of Women Voters and Tarpin Springs City Hall and all of you for coming out. My name is Chris Robowski, and many of you may already know me or recognize me. If you've ever attended a city hall meeting, a board of commissioners meeting, or watched one on television, you saw me standing at that podium right there, standing up for citizens of Tarpin Springs and speaking out to important issues. Over those eight years, many people have approached me with their concerns, and many of them have also asked me to run for office. And I got my inspiration this past year. In July, the city commission was discussing a local family and their home. And they were acting as if that family should have been in the audience to respond to questions, to which I had shouted out, "Did you bother to contact them?" They were silent. I asked the city attorney for their address. I went to their home, and they had, in fact, not been notified. So I insisted that from now on, we have a notification policy here in the city of Tarpin Springs, so that if any of your names should appear on a city agenda, you will be notified about that and have a chance to come out and defend yourself. So, I've already been doing the job over the last eight years. I can do it more effectively from here. I have some ideas about reducing our electric bill by taking on Duke Energy. We can get our money back. We don't have to wait for the state to do it. I also have a plan to help keep people in their homes by standing up to the banks, keep their homes out of foreclosure. I also have a plan to transport the elderly around town. These are things that I can do more effectively from this side of the dais. So if you elect me, Chris Robowski, I can more effectively take care of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll start the questions, and we'll start with Mrs. Seber. Do you approve of the Sponge Docks project? How will it help increase tourism? You have one minute.
Recently, the Board of Commissioners was, had Ed Hoffman do a revitalization, 9% revitalization plan that he presented. This plan has been in the works with the city for over a year. There have been several public forums held where residents, business owners, and divers were invited to attend and were given the opportunity for input. Mr. Hoffman changed his plan several times in lieu of these forums and based on a survey that he had taken. There, the city plans on spending over $1.5 million on this project, and as a business owner on the docks, I am very excited about a facelift to the Sponge Docks. I agree that we need to keep our heritage and our culture, but at the same time, our customer base has changed, and what our customers are looking for has changed. Our beaches in this past year and our hotels have been full and booked, and the Clearwater Aquarium has had record numbers. We have not been seeing the-
Thank you.
-people coming to Tarpin Springs.
Next, Mr. Robowski.
Yes, I've attended those most recent hearings, and Ed Hoffman gave another presentation. There were some concerned store owners out there, but I believe most of their concerns were answered at the last commission meeting. And we have to keep a balance between our city's rich history and heritage and also updating where we can. So I believe that Mr. Hoffman has done a fairly good job at walking that fine line. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Musio.
I'd like to use an analogy to answer this question, and the reason for that is, my analogy would be that there's a reason why Walt Disney World adds a new attraction to their park every single year, because if it was the same old park every year, people would not go. I also attended the meeting and also heard some of the discussions regarding maintaining the Greek heritage, which I totally agree upon. Tarpin Springs is known for that Greek flavor, and we should not change that. But we also need to make some modifications, whereas we're going to draw in people for the Sponge Docks. And I think there's a balance where we can keep the Greek heritage, but yet make some changes in the Sponge Dock where we're going to draw new people. Curiosity is going to help bring new tourists and new customers to the Sponge Docks. That's my belief about the changes to the docks.
Okay, the next question, and we'll start with Mr. Robowski. Give us your ideas/thoughts on the proposed sale of the old nursing home.
Yes, the main concern here is the condition of that building, and the other is selling the property that the city currently owns. It would have been nice if they had put it on the ballot for a lease. That's what it was previously. And now, if they had just leased it for another 30 years, if the city needed it, perhaps to move city hall there or for some other facility, it would be nice if we had that option. So, right now, there's a chance that the voters will vote it down, or they may vote it up. If they vote it up, at least we will get that building revitalized. So there is a good and a bad quality to it. The bad quality is, of course, we would be losing a valuable piece of property. I mean, we would be gaining the income and also the, we'll be gaining the sale money as well as the tax revenue. But we may also be losing a valuable piece of property that the city could utilize in the future. Thank you.
Ms., you're next.
First off, city government should not own property. That's the first agenda. Government is not in the business to own property. Businesses and local residents are. My understanding, and as I met with the economic development manager, and this process has been going on for two years, which is totally unacceptable. The people that want to buy the property offered the city full market value, $850,000 to purchase that property, and renovated with no stipulation and no incentives to purchase the property. The city's also lost two years of tax revenue because they decided to hold off for two years. There are some commissioners that don't want to sell the property because they feel that the city's going to be able to use it for something else. That property has been dormant for years, and it's in the best interest of the city to sell that property for $850,000, let them renovate the property. In fact, Alzheimer's is the number one senior disease right now in the United States, and that's what they're turning it into. I approve of the sale.
Thank you. Next.
I support the sale of the Walton Nursing Home property. We're in desperate need of assisted living facilities in this community. I feel that building a new facility would bring in tax revenue and also create new jobs.
Thank you. Okay, now we start the next question with Mr. Musio. How can you help improve the downtown business district?
Hmm, I had to be first, right?
Someone has to be.
Yeah, someone has to be. Well, I think, again, to bring in some new businesses would help generate tourism and even local traffic. We have some empty spots there. I know that there's a supper club coming in right now onto Tarpin Avenue, which I think will add. I think, you know, maybe bringing in, as I said, I spoke with the economic development manager. She's looking to bring in some new businesses, a coffee shop, deli possibly. I think that's going to spark more traffic downtown. Some of the stores right now are getting a facelift, and it'll look very, very nice. And I think they need to continue in that mood, uplifting and refacing some of the old buildings, giving it a new look, a new fresh look, and, again, to create curiosity to bring more people, not only tourism, but local traffic back to downtown.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you. I feel like a lot has been done downtown, and it's looking beautiful. As president of the Tarpin Springs Merchants Association, my goal has been to promote tourism and bring more visitors to our city. With a large portion of revenue coming from tourism, we need to do what we can to promote tourism. The Merchants Association created a plan, a marketing plan with an aggressive schedule of events that was incorporated with the chamber and the city's plan. And we also have printed brochures that are in all the visitor centers. We created the first brochure that's in all the visitor centers. It's also in AAA offices and the chambers and on the jolly trolley. We've had an aggressive schedule of events that bring tourists, and our residents enjoy as well. I believe in more residential development, and I'd like to continue smart growth and development and facilitate growth, but also be aware of keeping our businesses here. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, the creation of the facade grants has been a very wonderful thing for the city, people being able to upgrade their buildings. So this is already moving in the right direction. But we also have to fill those buildings and bring in more businesses. And we have a director that is working on that. It will be nice to get regular reports, at least monthly reports, to see how many businesses were contacted and find out what types of businesses were contacted, so that the commissioners will know. And I think that it is something that can be done by commissioners. You know, we can actually reach out to businesses, too. If you travel up and down the county, or throughout the state, or around the country, we can talk to businesses and say, "Hey, we're from Tarpin Springs. Look at how wonderful our downtown district is. Wouldn't you like to bring a business here?" So it doesn't just have to be done by one director. This is something that can be done by each of us, and that includes you out here. Thank you.
Okay, the next question, we'll start with Ms. Seber. What is the biggest issue facing the city?
Well, we have several issues. Economic development is very important. The revitalization of the Sponge Docks is quite important, preserving our environment. My goal is to make a difference in people's lives. As a former guidance counselor, I have, you know, with good listening skills and want to listen to the concerns of the citizens. As your city commissioner, I will listen to your needs and what we need to do to work together. I'd like to reduce our tax burden without shortchanging services. This involves streamlining government and expanding our tax base. I'd like to continue smart economic growth and development and energy savings. I'd like to continue to protect the environment and make sure our lake, rivers, river and bayous are clean. I'd like to make the city an even more walkable community by creating a self-guided tour that includes shade and benches from the Sponge Docks to our historic downtown. And I'd like to bring the green market back, and I'd like to work together to make Tarpin Springs stronger. Thank you.
So, I'll say the question again. What is the biggest issue facing the city? Mr. Robowski.
Yes, well, the biggest issue that Tarpin has to face is the flood insurance. I mean, each homeowner that I've spoken to is concerned about this, and for good reason. Now, they will tell you that there's nothing the city can do about that, and of course, this will be addressed federally. Gus Bellarakis is already drafting a bill. But there is something the city can do, and the city can set up a webpage or a center for people to call, and we can do the research for people. You know, why should each person have to compare and contrast different insurance rates and all of these things? So, the city can actually do this for our residents and make it easier for them to figure out what's going on. And we can have a direct line to Gus Bellarakis's office. So if there are any updates, you know, they will let us know, and we can send that information on to you, so that you don't have to, you know, wonder what is going to happen. Thank you.
I also feel that economic development includes just about everything that affects the city in Tarpin Springs, because people, as I said earlier, people that work in the city want to live in the city, which is also going to increase the population. It's also going to increase spending. Economic development is going to build the future of Tarpin Springs. I can't say enough about how I feel about economic development, because it just affects every entity. It affects revenue. It affects population. It affects businesses, not only new businesses, but it affects existing businesses and their growth and their success. And it's just very important, because the more people we bring in to the city, not only local residents but tourists, the local merchants are going to benefit and they're going to be successful. So to me, economic development is one of the major issues which affects, again, we have to look at building permits, building permit costs, and all of that needs to be looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robowski, how many commission meetings have you attended in the past year?
In the past year? How many commission meetings are there in the past year? That's, that's how many. And I may have missed one. I don't know. But I post most of these on my website. I haven't updated it up to the most recent, but they date all the way back to, I think, 2005. So I've got the minutes posted on my website, if you want to check it out to see what I said. I also put the timeframes on there, if you want to go watch the video of it, which is much better than the minutes. No offense, Irene, but it's a little more interesting to watch the video than to see the, to see what you said I said.
Mr. Musio.
I'm talking to the city clerk, Beck. All right, thank you.
Unfortunately, not many in person, but via YouTube, a majority of them.
Ms. Seber.
Yes, I can't count how many, but as a business owner and president of the Merchants Association, I am very involved. I try to come to as many of the planning and zoning meetings that affect our businesses and economic development, and have come to quite a few of the BOC meetings.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Musio. Can you find a more efficient way to utilize the water that is being wasted with the water department continually flushing of old pipes? That's a question.
I really don't have an answer for that unless I get into the nitty-gritty. But no, I really don't have an answer for that. How you're going to save water by cleaning pipes? You know, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer. I'd have to really look at the situation and the problem more carefully and more closely.
Do you have an answer?
I know we've had some problems with our pipes recently, sewage pipes, but, and the city is examining all those pipes. I support the alternative water plant as a way to reduce future bills, and the public voted on it overwhelmingly, and that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there have been a number of issues, A, with the sewer pipes, but I have also heard residents tell me that when they flush these pipes, they backflush them, that dirty water comes out of their faucet for a period of time. I haven't witnessed this in my own home. I haven't had this problem, but I have heard people complain of this. I would like to advocate cisterns, collection of rainwater, for any of those of you who are watering your lawn so that we can save water. That's a very important thing that we must do, and in Greece, I mean, cisterns are very common. So, cisterns here can be incentivized. You can get a break on your water bill. This is being done in Sarasota. I talked to a man from Swift Mud who gave a presentation here one year, and he said that that is a possibility, to incentivize people to collect rainwater. But as far as saving water for the backflushing system, they're going to have to fix that. They're going to have to fix the actual problem, what's causing the need for that. And they've got a big challenge with the sewer pipes as well. Thank you.
Okay, now, the next question, we'll start with Mrs. Seber. What is your view on maintaining the current tax rate until we are no longer using the reserves to balance the budget?
We currently have pretty good reserves. We need to increase our bond rating and streamline our government with increased technology, random departmental audits. We need to continue smart development, which will increase our tax revenue. As our economy strengthens, we hope to increase our revenue as well. We need to make sure that our city facilitates growth and expansion. As a business owner, I've had direct experience with opening and expanding business here in town, and I know the importance of efficiency and can bring some of that experience to the city. And with my experience as president of the Merchants Association, I'm proud to say that we quadrupled our reserves in the last three years without raising our dues by watching our expenses and bringing many successful events to the city.
Thank you. Next.
Will you please repeat the question?
Yes. I don't quite understand it. I hope you do. What is your view on maintaining the current tax rate until we are no longer using the reserves to balance the budget? Are you using, is Tarpin Springs using reserves to balance a budget?
Well, they have in the past, and that's been, that's been an issue. I mean, you probably don't recall this, but the past three of these things, I think you've moderated two of them. That was a big issue. And it was each commissioner, because I attend these each season. So, the, well, yeah, I mean, we have to keep reserves, and they're dark dwindling now, because they have used that over and over and over again. So yes, unfortunately, if and until we can bring in more sources of revenue for the city, we'll have to maintain at 5.45. So, that's where we are. And in order to keep the level of service that we have, we're going to have to, we're going to have to keep it that way until we can bring in more revenue. The economy, of course, is going to play a role in this, and this flood insurance thing, I mean, this is going to be huge. So, time is running out. I will, I'd be happy to discuss this with whoever put that question in afterwards. You know, we can look more detail. I've got the budget right here, but it's a lot, you know. I'd like to research it, if you have a very specific question about that. I'd be happy to address it with you in private. Thank you.
Mr. Musio.
Well, I'm going to go back to my original statement. Again, it comes into play is economic development. I believe that this year, they're not pulling from reserves, which is a plus for the city. They have in the past, but I don't think they will be pulling from reserves this year, based on my understanding. But I also believe that we need some technology advances to streamline the process here in the city, and also increase tourism to bring in more revenue to the city. Again, I can't say enough about economic development, bringing more residents into the city, and unless we increase revenue, we really can't decrease taxes. I hate to say it, but that's a fact. That's basic economics. We need to bring in more revenue, more revenue. We can then, at that time, cut taxes. But currently, until we do that, bring in more businesses, we just lost $850,000, and that would be revenue to the city. We didn't lose it yet, but we're just hanging on with a thread.
The next question, we start with Mr. Robowski. If and when the Walmart property on US-19 is for sale, what would be your plans to help develop it, or what would you see suitable for that piece of property?
Well, the property's already for sale, and I've been in contact with the- Well, the property's already for sale, and I've been in contact with the Trust for Public Land to make it a park. They will come here and give a presentation to the city about their process. And it's a very strong process. They will actually do polling and they will find out if people are in fact in favor of it. And if they are, then we move forward and we make it a park. And this will be a bond spread over many, many years. Be less than $20 per household, much less. This is very doable. That's the last piece of waterfront property, that we need to preserve it. Now, the city can still profit from that. You know, they can have, you know, somebody, they can lease them the option for renting kayaks, they could also have a bait shop on there. They can get money, revenue source from the wetlands. So the wetlands will, on that property, will actually make money for the city. So there are multiple ways to develop that property. We can also have a boat ramp and charge them for that. And time is up. Thank you.
Mr. Museo.
Well, I believe the first thing that needs to be done is that the zoning needs to be changed. If I'm not mistaken, I believe that property's still zoned commercial. And if it is, then, you know, some changes have to be made. I would like to see some type of economic development there. To include possibly retail stores. You know, we have parks here in the city, you know. We need to increase revenue. Parks don't increase revenue. Parks, you know, if we didn't have a park, I'd say, yes, let's go with a park. We have parks. We have dog walks. You know, it's, it's, we need to continue with growth. I know there are people behind there that don't agree with it, but it's like, you know, then we need to change the zoning. Change the zoning to non-commercial.
Thank you. Next.
I would like to research whether the zoning is commercial or not. I'm not sure about that. I do believe in economic development, but I also believe in protecting our environment. If the zoning could be changed, I would like to see, like Chris has said, either a park or maybe residential properties there. And protecting that property is very important.
Okay, good. Thank you. The next question, and we start with Mr. Museo. Are you a member or volunteer with our Tarpon Chamber of Commerce? Have you attended any of the events?
I'm a previous director with the Chamber of Commerce. I have, in the past, attended quite a few as I was voted ambassador of the month, to include ambassador of the year. Unfortunately, I had to leave for some personal reasons. But yes, I was very active with the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm quite active with the Chamber of Commerce. I became a partner right after I opened my first business. I'm involved volunteering at chamber events and doing events and marketing with the chamber as well as the city as the president of the Merchants Association. I go to weekly tourist development council meetings at the chamber every Thursday morning. And I believe in being involved and therefore have always been a chamber partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robowski.
Yes, I'm not a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I have contacted them most recently in regards to the Florida Capital Bank. This is a bank that was going out of business. And all of the employees there were worried about losing their jobs, and they did in fact, were informed they were going to lose their jobs. So I asked if we could talk to business owners around town for a little piece of property for that bank to move into so some people could keep their jobs. And I contacted Bob Heigl, the CFO of Florida Capital Bank, and he was all on board with the idea. So I was hoping the chamber would help me, but I didn't hear back from them. So what I did do is I went and researched the property that's right next door to Starbucks. And that used to be Chase Bank, before that it was Washington Mutual. That's hardened, that's a building that's ready for a bank. And I hope that they take that property and move in there. A new bank is moving in to the, to the 50,000 square foot building that Florida Capital is in. And that bank will, thank God, keep those people and their jobs. So at least they're keeping their jobs. But it is also my hope that the elderly who were concerned about losing their bank accounts will still get to keep theirs at Florida Capital. Thank you.
Okay, the next question, we start with Mr. Museo. In 2012, the Tarpon Springs City Commission voted unanimously to fluoridate the water supply when their plant goes online. With the known 70-year history of safety and effectiveness of fluoridation in the U.S., would you support fluoridation in Tarpon Springs? And if not, why?
I believe that the city commissioners for this issue have done their homework. And I have to say that I do agree with their...
I'm sorry, okay, I started with the wrong person. I'm supposed to, hold that thought. I'm supposed to start with Ms. Seber.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yes, there has been a lot of research done, the American Dental Association, the Center for Disease Control, the American Medical Association, and 50 years of practice throughout most of the world that has drinkable water has demonstrated fluoride to be supported and good. As a mother, my concern was, of course, with my daughter, getting cavities, going to the dentist and getting treatments is not always affordable, especially if you don't have dental insurance. Michelle hated going to the dentist, and she also has a heart condition, so she had to take antibiotics before going to the dentist, which made the situation even worse. So I definitely support my daughter, you know, when she was young, not needing to go to the dentist, and therefore she has beautiful teeth. And I do support fluoridation in water. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robowski.
Yes, I was in attendance at the meeting when they made that decision. And I understand why the commissioners voted the way they did. And it was my hope that we could find a way that people who wanted fluoride could get it, and those who didn't want it didn't have to. But I understand why they voted the way they did, and it's a settled matter. I mean, it doesn't need to be revisited. It's already, they're going to introduce it and people will be getting their fluoride that way. And I wouldn't do anything to change that unless, like I was talking to Dr. Johnny Johnson, the dentist back there, earlier today, about if we could find an alternative way. And so far, we haven't come up with one. So until we find a better method of distribution, we will simply be putting it into the water. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Museo, sorry.
Well, as I said, the board of commissioners at that time did quite a bit of research on adding fluoride to the water. And obviously, their findings were correct. I see no detriment to it, I would continue supporting it. And until, as was recently mentioned, unless we come out with a better or alternative solution, we need to continue to have fluoride in our water.
Thank you. Mr. Robowski, we start with you for this next question. What would you do to strengthen city employees' pensions?
Well, this is actually a very serious matter. Most of you may not be aware that in Detroit, the city went bankrupt. And for the first time, a federal judge has ruled on this, and now pensions are on the chopping block. They used to be protected. And so all the city employees now, across the nation, may be faced with this issue of losing their pension. So we have to be very cautious where we invest our money. We have to be very cautious how much of our reserves we in fact use. And so that's why we have to watch the mileage rate. You know, if the city were to go into bankruptcy, then according to a judge, a federal judge, doesn't matter how much time someone put in for work, doesn't matter how much they've earned, that's ridiculous. But until that ruling is changed, we have to protect the pensions in our city for our employees. They've already done the work, they deserve their pension. Thank you.
Mr. Museo.
We come back, and I believe that, I've been in the business world for 40 years, and I've lost some money because of companies that misappropriated funds. I would support anything I need to do for the employees of the city of Topin Springs. I'll go back to, again, the statement. We keep talking about spending money, and yet we want to preserve what we have today. And we can't do that. We need to increase revenue. In order to protect the employees, in order to protect the quality of life in the city, in order to protect the things that we take for granted. I can't say it enough, we need to increase the revenue. If you, if you lost your job tomorrow, what would you do? We'd have a problem because you would have no income. The city needs to continue to increase its income so that we continue to pay these people what they deserve and to maintain a good quality of life in the city of Topin Springs. Thank you.
Yes, our city employees depend on their pensions. They have been promised pensions and are counting on them. They, many employees do not have the earnings to go out and secure a 401K. So I strongly feel that we need to do whatever we can to protect their pensions, and a promise is a promise.
Thank you. Well, we already have one question about the sponge docks, but it's a big issue, I know. And especially with this redevelopment plan. So, the first question goes to Mr. Museo. What is your vision for the future of the sponge docks?
My vision would be to rejuvenate what Topin Springs sponge docks used to be. And that was the sponge capital of the world. That would be my vision for the future. And we can do it. And we can do it because we have the source to do it, we have the Greek background to do it, we have the intelligence to do it. And that would be my envision. I envision a large mural that stands at the entrance of Dodecanese that says, "Topin Springs, sponge capital of the world." That's my vision. It can be done, and I would support anything that we can do to bring that back.
Thank you. Ms. Seber.
Most of our visitors come to Topin Springs because of the sponge docks. They've heard of the sponge docks and they come to visit the sponge docks and see the beautiful culture and eat at the Greek restaurants. I believe that we do need to have a facelift and keep our culture. Our city manager told me the other day that he plans to make Topin Springs the number one cultural destination in Florida. That would make all of our business owners down on the sponge docks thrilled. We need to bring in revenue, we need to do what we can to bring visitors to Topin Springs. And I look forward to any kind of changes that will do that. Thank you.
Yes, again, we have to be very cautious and protect the heritage of the sponge docks, the historic value of it. And that's the primary goal. And I believe, again, that Mr. Hoffman's design plans respect those two things, as well as enhance what we already have by giving more, like giving a boardwalk and more space for people to move around the stores, as well as putting in brick pavers and bringing it back to the old world feel. So that's very important. And we're already moving in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, the next question, we start with Mrs. Seber. What would you do to help Topin Springs become more green? Or other ways to recycle?
I love our city and I want to protect our environment. Many of our visitors and residents enjoy our shaded streets and walkable community and our beaches and our parks. Tampa Bay Times recently reported that Tarpon Springs has the highest green space in Pinellas County, and that includes county and city property. I'm sure most of us would like, love to keep it that way. I support efforts to encourage green initiatives like increased use of solar energy, expand sewers, and reclaimed water, support our tree ordinance and keep our bayous and lake and river clean. I would like to encourage more walkable paths and shade. And as I said earlier, include a guided tour between the sponge docks and our historic downtown with shade and benches and greenery. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Yes, again, preserving the land along the Anclot River and making that a park, that's number one. And it won't be a drain on us. It will not only sustain itself, it can make the city money through the means that I've mentioned before, selling mitigation credits for the wetlands, boat slip, all that stuff. So, there's that. Also, solar energy. I believe that we can attract a solar manufacturing plant to Tarpon Springs. There are many vacant warehouses in our town. And there's a lot of emphasis put on retail and on restaurants. It'd be better, in my view, to actually create something here to enhance that, so that we aren't so reliant upon tourism. We could have good-paying jobs building solar water heaters in Tarpon, and we can enhance the sales of those by passing ordinances here as the board of commissioners. The board of commissioners will make it easier for each of you to put these on your house. So this is another way of making us a greener community. As far as recycling goes, you know, we have a wonderful recycling program that is in place, and I use it. And I recommend that each of you do as well. Also, cisterns, collecting rainwater and using that. Thank you.
Well, I believe the city already has a program in place to replace a tree. I'd like to take a look at that if elected as your city commissioner. I think that we can increase the planting of trees. I think, my understanding, the cost to move a tree and replant a tree is somewhat very expensive, which hinders people from planting trees in the city of Topin Springs. So we would take a look at the cost associated with people planting trees for rebuilding, new construction, things of that nature. I also believe that we can increase the number of users for reclaimed water. There's only a certain percentage of people that have access to use reclaimed water. Most peoples either use their own well if they have it, or they have to use city water. So I think we need to expand the number of households that have access to reclaimed water. Solar energy is great, people that have pools, a lot...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question, we start with Mr. Robowski. What are your accomplishments and experiences which prepare you for this office?
As I've mentioned before, I've been coming to these meetings for eight years. And many times, I will research the topics that are presented here. Sometimes as if I was a commissioner. And after researching them, if I felt that they needed my advice, I would get up and speak to those issues. So, many of the ideas that I have and that I've mentioned to you tonight can best be done from here instead of over there. I've noticed that this will be a whole lot easier place for me to implement the plans that I've discussed tonight. So, basically, I've been doing this job for eight years. And I've only been called to do it this past year because of what I explained to you, because what I had seen taking place here. Thank you.
Mr. Museo, what is your, what have your, how have your experiences and accomplishments prepared you for this office?
I have a few. One that I think is very important is my leadership skills. Having received an honorable discharge from the United States Army as a first lieutenant, I think is very important. I have the leadership skills needed to do the job. I believe my 40 years plus in the business world, where I've created million-dollar budgets for companies like Home Shopping Network, Thompson Media Group, I think gives me the experience needed to be the next city commissioner here in Topin Springs. My work with the Chamber of Commerce, my fundraising capabilities, my communication with businesspeople here in Topin Springs, to include local residents, I believe gives me the needed experience and ability to be the next city commissioner here in Topin Springs. Thank you.
Ms. Seber.
I'm a former guidance counselor, so I think I have pretty good listening skills and would be concerned about listening to your... and will be concerned about listening to your concerns. I am a business owner and very involved in this community. As a business owner and president of the Merchants Association, I'm involved with the Tourism Development Council. I am on several committees. I'm on the Budget Advisory Committee. So I'm already doing a lot of work as an involved citizen, and I've been a lifelong volunteer. I've had experience with budgeting and business and education. So I feel that I have some strong skills and tools to make a good city commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we start with Mr. Musio. There seems to be road construction projects and lengthy, confusing detour routes around every corner. What would you do to minimize road closures and improve safety along detour roads, routes?
Well, sometimes you're not going to avoid detours because of the type of construction that's needed. There's several areas that are under construction right now that are detoured, and you're not going to get around it because of the length of time it's going to take to accomplish this task. You know, there are several things you can look at. You can look at possible construction in the evening, where traffic is not that heavy with lighting. Major cities do that. You know, you can increase the number of crew members that are working on it to speed up the construction process. You really have to take a look at what's entailed. I don't know what's entailed in the construction and what's required in the construction. So you really have to know what needs to be done and how we can increase it. I think there's possible solutions, and that it would be to, as I said, possibly do it at night or increase the number of employees and work crew.
Thank you. Ms. Seber.
Yes, unfortunately, road construction is necessary, and I think that the city does what it needs to do to make it safe for residents with their detours. Having it be a more efficient and quicker process is obviously something that we all would like, but I don't know that you can avoid detours or construction.
Next.
Yes, speaking with the city clerk earlier about a project, that's a federal project along the bayou, and that's going to go on for some time. But if you're interested in that, contact the city clerk, and she can give you the documents that will show you their timeframe and why and when they will be closing roads around the bayou so that you can plan ahead. And also, anyone living near the bridge is going to have to also find out the schedule from the county when they redo the bridge. They're going to do another pop-up bridge, I believe. But until they fix that, it's going to be a long-time detour around that. So you want to contact the county and ask them their timeframe and their best suggestions for getting around. Thank you.
Ms. Seber, what are your plans for the beautification of the city? And how would you fund it?
Well, we already do have a tree ordinance that's funded by the city. Beautification and protecting the environment is very important. I would have to say the funding that's available would need to be used unless we have funding available through new development, where the developers actually pay for the funding. But I feel like they've been doing a pretty good job at beautifying the city and would like to see more.
Thank you. Mr. Robowski.
Yes, well, the art ordinance was just notified is going to stay in place. And there was a threat from a developer about suing over that because they didn't want to pay the fee. But public art will help beautify our town. And I would like to see our section of the trail beautified, but also added shade. There are no sections of shade anywhere from St. Pete to here, and we could have a shaded trail, and it could also be beautiful. They could make it out of living plants, make a tunnel out of living plants, a canopy, or they could do it, you know, I'm certainly no artist, so I'll leave it up to the artist. But there is a way to beautify the trail all the way through Tarpon, to make it some destination spot. So somebody riding a bike would hear, "Hey, you want to go all the way up to Tarpon Springs?" And they've got the most beautiful section of the county trail. And oh, by the way, check out their restaurants and shops in downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Musio.
Well, I already believe that the city has a good plan in for beautification. I've seen it. It works. To look at the trail, I think you have to look at the safety concerns that you have by putting in a lot of heavy trees and brush along the trail, because there's been some issues with safety and people getting robbed, mugged. So you have to be careful, very careful, with the type of vegetation that you put up along the trail. Again, I think the city's doing a wonderful job currently with the beautification project, and I would continue to support it as, if elected. Thank you.
Mr. Robowski, this, what makes you stand out from the other candidates?
Well, my passion for our city and our, I mean, I've been doing this for eight years, coming to these meetings. And I've been researching and speaking out. And again, people would approach me, and they, you know, they either shared the same concerns, or they would ask me with help with their projects, their personal projects. And this happened quite a bit in the last eight years. And some people were dragging me up to Pasco County and other people down to Dunedin or Clearwater. And it was all from speaking here. So if you elect me your commissioner, you can call me anytime, any question that you have, 727-481-9076. Any question. If I can help, I certainly will. And if I find myself unable to help, I will help you find someone that can help you. Because there, I see us as one big family here in Tarpon Springs, and families help one another. Thank you.
Mr. Musio.
I feel I'm the best candidate for the position. One, because of how long I lived here in Tarpon Springs and some of the changes that I've seen. If you look at my card outside, I actually make a pledge about what type of job that I would do as your next city commissioner. And I take that pledge very seriously. And when you make a pledge, and when you're in the military, you live up to that pledge. And when I made the pledge, I will live up to it, that everything that I do will be in the best interest of the city. And I believe the experience and the abilities that I bring forth, to include my flexibility with having some logic and looking at things objectively, I think that I am the best candidate for this position. And I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Ms. Seber.
Yes, I feel that my diverse background as an educator, as a counselor, as a business owner, as president of the Merchants Association, and my total involvement in the city since I've been here would make me a good candidate. I've been asked to run because of my involvement to serve you. I just feel that I've already been an involved person and want to continue that involvement and work together with everyone. I'm a concerned listener as a counselor and want to listen to your needs and your concerns. And I feel I've had experience, from my business experience as president of the Merchants Association, to make sound decisions and know how to budget. So I feel that I'm already doing the work and would like to continue to do the work. Thank you.
Okay, audience, I feel that I've reviewed all the questions. There were a lot of duplicates. Does anyone have another question or an issue that they think needs addressing? Okay. Thank you. Now, we will have our concluding statements, and we will start with Mr. Robowski for one minute.
Once again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for all they do. It's very important work. And the city for hosting this event, and all of you for coming out. And I would like to invite you to come out to each city commission meeting that you can make it to. Such a wonderful, educative event each time. And if you can't make it here, watch it either on TV or online. It's so important to be involved in our community, and that's what I've been doing. And again, if given the opportunity, if you elect me city commissioner, I will make good on my promises. There is a way to get our money back from Duke Energy, the money they stole for that nuclear power plant that they're never going to build. There is a way to keep people out of foreclosure, and there is a way to transport the elderly to their doctor's offices and to the store. We can get vehicles donated. We can screen the drivers through the police department. We can get stores, like Publix, to help contribute if we bring those customers to them.
Thank you.
And my time is up. Thank you so much.
Ms. Seber.
I love Tarpon Springs, and I'm proud to be a resident of Tarpon Springs. I promote Tarpon wherever I go. As president of the Merchants Association, I've been successful in uniting the downtown merchants with the sponge dock merchants. It was instrumental in getting public bathrooms to the west end of the docks. We've brought thousands of visitors to Tarpon Springs with our events, like our wine walks, our food truck rallies, our Hippie Fest, our Oktoberfest, our Seafood Fest, and plan even more events this year. We created a brochure that was distributed in all the visitor centers, as I mentioned earlier, and it's in the jolly trolleys. We've spent thousands of dollars advertising and promoting Tarpon Springs. I spoke about some of my experiences as being diverse with my background as an educator, a counselor, a business owner, and a lifelong volunteer. I would like to work together with you and bring that same energy and drive that I have. And I would like to be your next city commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, for this opportunity. It was a great honor to be here and have the opportunity to speak to everyone here tonight. I'm a very humble person, and it's hard for me to sit here and say to you what I've done and what I haven't done. There were two answers that I gave tonight that I was not very happy with. And one was the fact that I haven't been very active in the last year and a half. And the second one was that I haven't physically attended BOC meetings. And I think you need an explanation for that. And the explanation was the fact that for the last year and a half, I've been ill, and I'm back again. And that's the reason why I haven't been here physically. And I didn't tell you that I'm ill because I want your sympathy or anything else, but I want you to understand why I haven't been here. And I think that's very important. But I want this opportunity to say to you that I believe my passion to be your next city commissioner far exceeds anything that I can ever say to you. And I hope you give me the opportunity to prove that to you and accept my pledge that I will be one of the best city commissioners you've ever had. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates.
Thank you.
That is it.